Sometimes they're not pointed right.
It is 5:30 and I will call this regular meeting of the Talalco City Council to order.
Thank you.
If we could have roll call, please?
Councillor Long.
Here.
Councillor Baker.
Here.
Councillor Hires.
Here.
Councillor Ratliff.
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. Our invocation this evening will be presented by Mr. John Lee of the Park Hill Baptist Church. If you would stand.
Just join me with prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, we've come before you tonight in gratefulness, Father. Gratefulness for this community in which we live, for the freedoms that we enjoy and the privileges that we share. Father, we're also grateful for those who serve and we're grateful for those who lead. And we're grateful for concerned citizens who care about the community as well. Father, we pray that you'd be with each of them, that you would grant them godly wisdom, Father, to act in a manner that is honorable, Father, toward one another and toward you. We pray that you would grant them wisdom to act in honesty, fairness, compassion, and transparency as they do the business of this community. We pray for a productive night. They would continue to lead to a better community in the days ahead. I pray for your watch care, your protection, and Father, for your blessings over the people of Talalco. Thank you, Father, in Jesus's name. Amen.
If you would, join me with praise, Lord. Congratulations to the members of the North City Council. Thank you. For those who are joining online, we welcome you to the conversations. If you'd like to join in on any topic, please wave your hand or write the word comment in the comments line and we will get you into the discussion. Item number three is public comments. Comments will be accepted from the general public concerning topics that are not included in the meeting's agenda. Individuals will be limited to three minutes of speaking time and cumulative total of all comments from the public shall not exceed 15 minutes. Preference will be given to Talalco residents. And in compliance with the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act, no action or discussions permitted by the city council on any issue or topic raised by speaker during the public comment, period. Is there anyone who would like to address council? If you would, to the podium and give us your name.
Good evening, it's nice to be here physically president of the city council meeting. I'm Dr. John Use, and I just have one comment to make. I did do some research on the Salala Hospital Authority doing business as Northeastern Health System. Okay, it does not appear in the trustees' agenda with the monthly financial statements. The last audit was submitted May 31st, 2020, and it was filed April of '21. There's been no audit filed since that period of time. And there was an essential amount of accounts payable due to the Talalco Hospital Authority. In addition to that, basically what I'm saying is, I pulled up on the internet, as of 18 months now, they've not filed a report for the period ending for the subsequent year. So I would like to make an inquiry as to why it does not appear on the trustees' agenda regarding financial statements and obtain some kind of status report because it doesn't appear in the audit also. It's the Salala Hospital Authority doing business as Northeastern Health System. Thank you.
Would anyone else care to address council? Anyone online? Moving on to the consent agenda. These items placed on the consent agenda so all members of the city council by unanimous consent can designate routine items to be approved by one motion. Any item proposed on the consent agenda not meeting with the approval of all council members will be removed, heard in regular session. Counsel? Are there any you would like to remove?
I would like to take off H. And O.
Are there any others? Would you like to take action on the remainder?
I make the motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a roll call, please.
Councillor Long.
Yes.
Councillor Ratliff. Councillor Hires.
Yes.
Councillor Baker.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Announcements, presentations, and reports. We have recognition years of service for the employees. Dela Combs with the Talalco City Police Department and Matthew Fritz, Talalco City Police Department, both with five years are either with us, Chief King. Please give them our congratulations for five years and our thanks for their service to the city. And out of Waste Management is Daryl Sybert with 15 years. Okay, well, if you would, also take our consideration and our thanks to him. We have a report from the library.
Good evening. Last month, we had about 5,400 people through the door. It's, it kind of goes down a little bit after summer, but it's still pretty good. We will be closed Monday, October 10th. Upcoming programs, we're finishing up a round of Tai Chi and then the next class we're going to do in the evenings. So if anybody's looking for an evening Tai Chi class. The Friends of the Library meeting will be tomorrow at 10:00. We are starting a music program. We're going to do one quarterly. So our first one will be with the Bear Creek troupe, which will be on Thursday at 6:00. They're going to come perform in the library. We're pretty excited about that. Intro to Poetry Writing with Sean Perkins from the Rural Oklahoma Museum of Poetry will be September 13th at 6:00. Our Adult Coloring Class will be September 15th at 10:00. We have our regular kids programs on Tuesdays and Thursdays every week from at 10:00 and 11:00. We are starting a cooking class series. This one will be making salad dressings. And that will start, well, the first one will be on September 15th at 6:00. We're going to be doing a mini art show, which is for all ages. And so people can come in and pick up a little mini canvas, take it home and paint it and then bring it back to the library and then we're going to set it up and display it. So see some art from the community. We are going to be doing a local author meet and greet on September 24th from 10:00 to 2:00 and we've invited authors from the community. We've got 11 that are going to come and be there, so if you're interested. And then our Band Book Club will meet on September 29th at 6:00 PM. We did a whole bunch of outreach last month. We did three back-to-school bashes. And then we also did the monthly mingle with the Chamber of Commerce just last Friday. And that was really well attended, even though it rained right before, so we're excited about that. And then lastly, September is Library Card Sign-Up Month. So if you don't have your library card already, I would implore everyone to get one or invite a family or friend to also get theirs.
Do they still bring the kids in from school to do that?
Some, we had some over the summer that they brought in.
I've seen them, they brought them in like school buses and because it seems like my kid came home with a library card in like kindergarten or something, maybe.
I think transportation is an issue now, so a little less. Thank you.
Thank you. A report from the Chamber of Commerce?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Quick update on a few of the things we've got going on this week is our Leadership Retreat, the 8th and the 9th. We're going to Tinkiller Lodge. We've got a class of 23 participants. This is Leadership Class 25. Got a great class. It's well represented from banks, real estate, small businesses, several from downtown. So it's going to be a great class. We're excited. The 8th, we're going to be at Tinkiller Lodge. The 9th, we're going to be at Terrapin Peak Bed Breakfast and Beyond. So we're going to have a great session this week. Next week is our Women in Business Event. It's going to be at the Legacy at MK Ranch, the 14th, Wednesday, the 14th. Going to be 11:30 to about 1:00. We're going to try and get everybody out at 1:00. It may go till about 1:15, but lunch will be included there. So tickets are available on our website or you can call the chamber and we'll get you set up. We've got a new event, Business After Hours. So it's very similar to the monthly mingle that Cherokee mentioned that we had at the library. This one is just in the evening. It's, it's still the networking event. We're still trying to network the businesses, the owners and the community. We just had a lot of people say they couldn't make the 8:00 AM one and they requested an after-hours one. So here we are, 4:00 to 6:00 PM on the 22nd. We're going to get it together at the Rustic Brush. Kind of a painting with a twist theme to it. So we're going to do some, some fun arts and we'll have beer and wine there as well for the attendees. So we're looking forward to a new event that we're going to be hosting now. And this one will be twice a year. If we have really good turnout and feedback, we'll increase it to quarterly and potentially monthly if we have people that continue to come out to it. We have our golf tournament on the 30th and then follow that with monthly mingle again on October 7th. October 8th is My Talalco. Wanted to say a thank you to Brian. He joined, joined your team at the Parks and Rec Department. He's already been in multiple of our meetings. And so we are making sure that he is getting involved very quickly. So we appreciate him and his willingness to support our My Talalco committees, our Christmas Parade committees and all those. So I think that's what we've got coming up over the next couple of weeks. Any questions?
Christmas Parade, what's the day of the Christmas Parade?
December 2nd.
Okay, all right. And then over the weekend, of course, because it was Cherokee National Holiday, I had a lot of people who were looking to the chamber website for some information. And I guess they said some of the information on there was still outdated, so I didn't know.
Which, you know which part? Because we've, there's certain ones that are still outdated. Our Marketing Coordinator, we had a new one start just a couple of weeks ago. She's done a website audit and she is starting specific pages. Most of the outdated information is just the events pages. Most of the other ones are pretty good.
Because they mentioned they were looking for restaurants like, and they said that a lot of the restaurants listed on there weren't even in business anymore. And of course, there's a lot of new restaurants that we have now that aren't even listed on there. So people who came to town might not be aware that we had Rafa's or
So on the chamber, it will only be our members that are listed. So not all restaurants will be listed on the chambers directory. And then if you sort it, there's a, on the directory, there's a sort option top left and it says sort by restaurant. Some of them put themselves in restaurants, some of them put themselves under food and beverage. So there's two different categories that they fall under. And so if you search in different categories, some may show up, some may not. But that was on the chamber, you have to be a member to show up. Now, Tour Talalco and Explore Cherokee County may be different. When Gina comes up here in just a second, ask her about that one. But the chamber website is members only.
Okay, so that's part, you still have Chambermaster?
No.
And how they self-classify?
We have Blue Up.
Okay.
Yeah, we changed last year.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a report, video from Tour Talalco. Gina?
Yeah. Oh, my God, okay. I'm going to make my report really quick because we have some other exciting things that Danny is helping me with. He just knew that and he just was told that, though. So let's give him a minute to breathe. Okay, so number one, our numbers are amazing. They're off the charts. Women of the Wind, which is our women Harley riders, are starting to come in tomorrow. So you'll see a ton of bikers, women Harley riders. Started out as 75 and they're now up to 140. So that's super exciting. And Diamond Stone kicks off tomorrow, too. Well, as far as like setting up. Our Visitor Guide, we're finalizing that. It's going to be an amazing piece. It's actually going to be designed as a coffee table piece, not just as a brochure. Our social media is escalating. Our tax numbers are great and we're doing amazing. Spider Riders are super excited. I'm the master of ceremonies for the Spider Riders this year. Very excited to say that. But the most exciting part is, okay, we had a video, but there's some technical difficulties. So you guys are going to have to sort of use your brain on this a little bit. So close your eyes, go back to our Norman Rockwell movie. Snow machine, carolers, carriage rides, frosted rose, well, not frosted, roasted pecans, signature hot chocolate drinks. All downtown Talalco, okay? So keep that all in mind. Now, Danny? Danny is my amazing partner here. He has very generously decided to help me and he is my Christmas chairperson. So I really wanted to have New Hallen come in with the boom sprayer and spray Christmas snow or artificial snow all over, but that wasn't going to work. So we've got other ideas. I'm going to hand these out.
Okay. And I guess I can jump right?
Gina, we can't accept things that aren't already posted on the website.
It's just pictures, okay, well, I'll just Will that work?
You can pass them to the community.
I can do that.
And these are just pictures of the animated lights.
At the end of the meeting.
Okay. Nathan's tired of listening to this. All right, so what we have is we have a Christmas committee and that is comprised of Danny, Jamie, Christie, Becca, Becca Owen, Nathan is part of that as well. Alex, our marketing person. This is really cool. Sharon Baker. She has, she has decided that she would love to help with this. And I don't know if you guys go and look at her Christmas lights, but she has an amazing display outside of her house. So she has lots of knowledge, expertise that will really help.
Yeah.
Who else is on? Oh, Austin Patton.
Yeah.
Randy Rock. I'm thinking about Sarah Combs.
Sarah Combs.
And Amanda Lambertson.
Yeah.
That's our committee. So what we've done is we've come together. They've picked out, so far they've picked out 18 lights just to begin with. And it's all on that little video, but nevertheless, we picked out animated lights and static lights to help graduate the price of that.
With additional matching garlands, ribbons to match downtown that we already have with Main Street.
So what we're creating, we are creating a drive-through Christmas experience as well as a walk-through. So it's the same thing, but that way if people can't walk, they can drive as well. The lights will go from a little, the day after Thanksgiving to January 9th. We're having our big Christmas extravagance with the carriage rides, the carolers, the frosted, I keep saying frosted, roasted pecans, signature hot chocolate drinks, Christmas with Santa pictures for kids and the dogs. And it's all going to be the day after the Christmas parade, which is the same day as the cookie stroll. So it's going to be that evening. So everybody can come to Talalco for the whole entire weekend and experience Norman Rockwell. The map is, and let Danny do the map, that was his.
You have to forgive me. She told me I was speaking like four minutes ago, so.
I knew he wouldn't come if I told him he was speaking beforehand.
I've kind of, I've kind of defined it so that the driving tour takes you through more than just this particular place. You can start at Seminary Hall, drive through downtown Talalco and turn onto Tua heading east and then pull into the park and then come back up to Shawnee Street and bring you back to Main Street. What else am I supposed to talk?
And, okay, we're having a living nativity scene right there. It's all going to be centralized around the armory that evening with Christmas with Santa pictures and all of that.
Yeah, it's just, we're trying to just we've had some people on Facebook talk about Christmas and all this. And I'm a Christmasaholic. You know, I've, I've raised money for three different sets of Christmas decorations. I started with former Mayor Cook and Patty Hill for the first festival of lights that we had down on the park 30 years ago. And so this is kind of an, a much more extravagant way of doing that without just having four strands of lights and
We want it to be a big display with our Christmas lighting of the Christmas tree and just making it a Christmas destination.
Right.
The only thing, when, I think what I'll do is I'll email you guys all the videos. The only thing different in that video that won't happen is the ice skating rink. Because I have that on there. If, in case we don't have that, in case it doesn't happen with the heat, the wind and all of that. So that's, we can imagine that we're skating. Yeah. So instead of just being able to drive through light and go home, we want to come to Talalco State the entire weekend, enjoy Santa. And we are making the same Santa so kids don't get confused that night, that daytime Santa has blue eyes and nighttime Santa has brown eyes or whatever. That's the same Santa.
Right.
So it won't be confusing. So anyway, so we're making it a Christmas destination.
Hopefully the children aren't watching tonight's council meeting because you would have spoiled the strategy.
Well, you just told every They have contacts in. Some Santas were contacts that are colored. And so we don't want him to take those contacts out because of the dry air and all of that. So it's the same Santa without any issues with vision and so on and so forth.
Could I ask a question about the living activity scene?
Yes.
What exactly?
It will be, and we already have carolers and the carriage rides and all of that. But the living nativity scene will be lots of animals. We have llamas and donkeys and a cow and a pony. And it will be like a nativity scene with Mary Joseph, the baby and all of that, live people.
Could I nominate Councillor Stephen to take part in that? He has, he loves animals.
I, I would love that and yes. And we have this adorable little llama that's going to come.
Maybe we dress up the council as the nativity.
I am trying to get a monkey, but that might be a little weird.
Oh, yeah.
But yeah, so anybody has any, if they have any animals they want to donate to this, feel free, I have a horse, a marine horse. It'll be really fun.
I hope you're hopefully
And signature hot chocolate, like Vidalia's is making
Yeah, we're, we're encouraging places who may not always do hot chocolate, but those of us who do could come up with some signature hot chocolates for their businesses. And that will be tagged through the, the drive-through with QR codes.
Yes. Each ornament or
Yeah, each ornament, they'll have a way, we'll have a way to push them to local restaurants and local businesses.
With sponsorship, so if Vidalia's wants to sponsor the jumping down the chimney Santa animated light, it'll have their QR code going for whatever they want it. So each one will have a sponsorship.
It sounds like amazing fun.
I'm so excited. We might have to wear swimsuits, but hey, it's still going to be Christmas in Talalco.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jamie, you're behind the post for?
Yes. Good evening. Okay, I want to start off with Brian Speak from the Parks and Recreation Department. He has been absolutely phenomenal, so I just want to give him a shout out. He has been so generous to us and is always willing to, you know, give me a call, talk things through, all of that. He is also, you know, always very receptive of our business owners and all of that. So just big shout out to Brian. We are loving him thus far, getting him set up on some committees. So, you know, he'll be a busy guy. Our very last Food Truck Friday is this Friday. We did start out with First Friday Food Truck Fridays, but due to the Labor Day and the holiday weekend, we went ahead and pushed that back an extra week. So that will be this weekend, Friday, September 9th. We are also showing, it's another movies in the park. We are showing the movie Grease. And so that will start at dark, which I believe right now is around 8ish or so. It should be dark enough for us to go ahead and show that. So food trucks, outdoor games, all the fun things, and then Grease, movies in the park. We also will be partnering with Main Street and My Talalco for the Fall Cleanup. That takes place on October 8th. So our design committee is working right now, coming up with the different projects that Main Street will be doing as well. So that takes place on October 8th. Oakswagon takes place on October 15th in Norris Park. For those that do not know what that is, it is a Volkswagen car show. The car show was put on by Fowl Air Club. So Talalco Main Street and Fowl Air Club partner for that event. Ladies Night Out will be November 15th, I'm sorry. I'll go back, November 17th, 5:30 to 8:30. So Ladies Night Out is always the Thursday before Thanksgiving, just to kind of give you a reference. So November 17th will be that date. We will have all of our Christmas lights, our poles, all of those decorated. That day is November 12th. So we always like to have those out before Ladies Night Out. And then the Christmas tree will be going up sometime that week. So as soon as we get that finalized, I will let you know. The City Parks and Rec Crew is always fantastic to help us, as well as Dylan Springwater. He's always fantastic and you can usually get it up in about an hour and a half maybe at this point. So they've pretty much got it down to a science. So at some point that week, the Christmas tree will be going up as well. And as Gina said, the Christmas, the cookie stroll, December 3rd. So that is going to be a phenomenal weekend. I know I've even talked to some Airbnbs Bed and Breakfasts that are already booked for that weekend just for that very reason. So we are super excited for a weekend of holiday festivities. And then one other thing I want to mention, I did mention this last time, that Talalco Main Street is working with Main Street America as well of the, as well as the Oklahoma Main Street Center to come up with a strategic plan for the downtown corridor. We are currently working on that right now. A lady, Lisa Thompson, will come from Nationals, October 4th and 5th, I believe, don't quote me on that, it may be the 6th. But we will be putting out a community survey this week. And as many people that we can get to fill out that survey, this is your opportunity to tell us your likes and your dislikes, things you want to see in the downtown corridor, things that you don't like to see in the downtown corridor. And that gives the community the proper platform to go about doing that. So please, if you want your voice to be heard, that is a great opportunity to do so. Like I said, look forward to that by the end of this week. So within the next two days, we're getting that finalized and that should be out by the end of this week.
Now to roll that on Facebook, Jamie?
Do what?
That, that survey?
Yes, we will, we will absolutely roll it out on Facebook. We will also have like a PDF copy if you need to come in and grab one of those. We do realize that some people don't utilize the internet for those kinds of things. We will put out a press release in the newspaper for that as well. And that will, we will take that through, I believe, September 25th is the cutoff date so that Main Street America has the opportunity to kind of gather that data before they come in October. Both, both, yeah. I mean, they, they do kind of have a baseline that they, they go for. And then myself and Austin Patton, our president and our exec committee kind of go over that to make sure that there is anything we want to add or something that doesn't really, you know, that maybe we don't have, you know, that would pertain to us. So, but for the most part, yeah, everything, everything was their baseline. All right, thank you.
Appreciate that, Jamie. Moving on into the regular session, item number six is discussion possible action on items removed from the consent agenda. We will start with item H to approve the city administrator access to online banking to back up the finance support officer. Mr. Baker?
I necessarily didn't have a problem with that, but I just thought being open-ended and not giving a timeframe as to how long we're going to be doing this, is it just going to be for the time that she is gone?
That is not the intent. The intent would be for that access to continue. So I can clarify for those who are here in the audience. The access that we are speaking about is transmitting the ACH file to the bank, pulling down e-statements and doing stop payments, should they be necessary. So it is not actually touching the money so much as it is pulling down reports and transmitting the payroll that has been pre-approved and finalized by others within the department.
So that, that's what Michelle does, am I correct?
Correct.
So she's going to be gone for how long?
Well, she has a baby due this week and twins due in December. So she will be in and out quite a bit for the next several months.
Well, then I would like to, you know, think that instead of making it open-ended just for the period of time that she's gone would probably be more appropriate.
I would disagree. It is always good to have a backup who can do this.
Well, I think there needs to be some separation between between those two. between those two. Um, you.
So I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I assume this is where you turn and look at me and ask me if I have a question every single time. I don't necessarily have a problem with it. I'm fine with it. My, my only question would be the approval process. Cause I would assume that Alan, well, the city manager is like the approval. So it probably goes through the finances and then it would go to someone, the finance director, but in the absence of the finance director, I am assuming that it goes to the city manager. And then the final approval happens.
If you don't mind addressing that, Ms. Pape, would appreciate that.
Thanks for the opportunity. Um, I'm glad I stayed. And, and really, this is more of a risk standpoint. We already have those procedures in place. Separation of duties is done. Um, if you all will recall, um, we do not have a current finance director for the city of Talalqua. Um, and we haven't had one for several years. So, um, at this point, every payroll that happens within the city, Michelle and I are always here. And, um, this last payroll, uh, we have to have a backup. And, um, while Michelle has certain duties and availability, um, I have other duties and availability. Um, but Michelle, there is, is the one person. Again, this is a matter of approving ACH file that has been processed in our payroll system and processing it. The only people that have access to move funds and those bank accounts is our mayor and our city treasurer. So it's not a matter or anybody else.
Just one quick question. Am I correct in saying that Mr. Chapman does not have the ability to go into Casell and actually modify the records?
And modify that? No.
He, he can't.
No.
Create or change anything within that payroll file.
But that is correct. Once that file has been created and, and there is a two-person process on that as well. So, and, and has been since the day I joined the city almost four years ago.
So I think that answered my question. I'm not totally sure. So it's done by, it's done by finance and then it.
By finance and HR.
Packaged and then I would assume it would go to like a finance director, but we don't have one now. So that finance director would be the city administrator to say, yes, like the final sign-off, check off.
Which he currently does.
Okay. So that's my, okay. So that.
He's signing off on it. He can't modify it if he sees something that is a question.
Okay. So that's my question then. So if he now is.
Nor can Michelle.
If he, what, what happens on the, the times that he would be the one transmitting the ACH? Like he can't be the final sign-off and the submitter, I wouldn't assume.
I don't know why not.
Well, that would be me when there is one person that creates that file. It is a two-person and that's a security process through the bank. So he would never be able to send a file.
Can you submit as well?
I don't submit. I am an approver.
She can't submit because she is actually creating the file. The. So that's your internal. That is your internal control there.
Right.
Michelle doesn't enter new hires into the system. She doesn't change anybody's payroll records, their salary or anything like that.
This is actually just clicking on the button to submit it.
And also being able to pull down the bank statement, just like any of us could do with our online banking.
Sure. And I don't, I don't have, I mean, I, I truly don't have any issue. I just want to make sure there's not a chain of custody break or there's not an audit question later, because I would assume that it goes to Alan and he signs off. And then somebody else pushes the button. That's currently how it happens.
Well, and, and the reality is, and it gets back to the matter of, uh, the risk and security, because you have two people that are here and there's never any guarantee for any of us that we're going to be here tomorrow. And so we have, um, this number has changed just a little bit because some of our seasonal employees no longer here. But our utmost importance is to pay all of our employees in a timely manner every time. And that is our goal. And, and we don't have that backup at all right now. Not even Marty or, or the mayor have the availability to do that. It's, it's Michelle and myself.
If, if I may, Stephen, it's a concentration risk right now, um, with Michelle and no backup. And so, um, the internal controls guide the process, um, where there's no duplicate type transactions. But, uh, more importantly, it's, um, concentration, not having a backup. Well, sure. And I understand that. And that's why I'm not. I just wanted to be clear, and I think that it's happened that I've gotten that answer. I just want to make sure that the end of the eternal controls aren't, isn't now also the, the person that pushes the button, you know? Because I understand it's just a button to push, but it's a, you know, you gotta walk through the process and you gotta make sure that everybody's signing it off and and then it doesn't come back. So I think I.
And, and I think you pointed out, Marty, that this was necessistic because of her absence. So this is my reasoning is, is that if we're doing it for her absence, why don't we just have a ending date to her return?
Have you ever had grandchildren?
And that's the reason why I, I said upon her return.
Well.
Not being known.
I think Marty, you can speak more to the risk because it's not just that.
You know, all, all the departments in the finance department, um, need overlaying duties and responsibilities for checks and balances. Um, but to make it temporary when she's gone, as far as banking is concerned, you're to go in, hey, she's going to be gone tomorrow. Alan, let's, I gotta go to the bank and try to get him approved through the signature cards and online access. And then I got denied the access and then hooked the access back up. Um, I don't think it's, um, I don't think it's a matter of the person, um, making the check is signing the check is what we're alluding to. So.
Well, that made more sense to me than anything else. So.
Any further questions? If not, would we like to take action?
Motion to approve.
Second.
But we have roll call, please. Thank you, Melin.
Counselor Ratliff.
Yes.
Counselor Long.
Yes.
Counselor Stevens.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And then.
Did I get the vote?
Oh, I thought you already did. Sorry.
No, I called him. I'm just waiting on.
Oh, yes. Yeah. I didn't hear me.
I didn't hear.
I didn't hear my name. Sorry.
Okay. So then moving on to item O, to approve the appointment of and contract with attorney John Tyler Hammons as city attorney.
Um, I was kind of under the impression that this was going to be in the next or oncoming, uh, monthly or mid-monthly meeting. And I just now received the contract and I haven't had time to look for it. So I'd like to, uh, make the motion to have no action at this time to allow me to at least look at the contract.
Is there a second?
Point of order. I'll take that.
I would say if you want to take no action, that wouldn't be.
Okay.
You don't take an action, but take no.
Okay. Okay. I'll go with that.
Oh, can I ask, I'm sorry. BJ, have you had a chance to look at the contracts or?
Sorry.
No, that's, that's okay. Don't apologize. I was just curious.
I just, I mean, having just gotten it. What? Have you looked at it?
No, I just.
Okay. I, I would think it, you know, just being able to look at it. Uh, when talking about contracts, so just getting it and approving it, uh, would be, uh, something not in the best of the city's interest. So I would like to take time and be able to read that. So how should we move for that action?
I mean, I would agree.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, we either take no action or.
Okay. Then I would like to table it or.
Is that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. I'd like to table it for this time.
Is there a second? Not hearing a second and not hearing a alternative motion. Then we will move on from this one. Item number seven is to approve, approve with modification or deny the extension of the Talalqua Police Department Recruitment and Hiring Incentive Agreement for our current fiscal year. Chief King.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Um, this is the same hiring incentive program that we put in place the end of last fiscal year. Um, it expired intentionally. Um, and I was just a little lapsed in bringing it back to see if the council wanted to continue that practice or not.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So we're gonna, I see the terms of the program. We're gonna take this back to Jan- July 1. I believe we've hired an officer in there.
That officer was hired prior to July 1. It just took forever for his physical to take place. Um, we've hired one dispatcher since then, but, um, she has recently abandoned her post.
Okay. So I was just, that was my, I was just gonna make sure that we didn't.
It, it won't actually cover anybody. At the, when we, when I submitted it, it would have covered one dispatcher that was hired in that interim. Um, but at the present time, it won't affect anyone post-dating.
I make a motion to.
One second.
Lady, are you for, are you for this? I mean, is it, do you feel like there's still value here?
I do. I do. I think there is value.
Had it and it's not doing anything for you as of, as of yet, right?
Well, it's, you know, we're in a unique time in law enforcement. Um, not only for people coming into the field, but then when you have McGirt and the Cherokee Nation has, their marshal service overnight has tripled in size is what they're trying to do. And so you've got a lot more bites at the apple, but the apple's the same size as it always was. And so we've, we've lost a few to the marshal service and our applicant pool just isn't what it used to be. Um, and so I, I mean, I think there's merit to it, but at the same time, um, you know, if we don't want to do it, we don't want to do it. We hired people for lots of years without doing it. So, um, honestly, but some of what's happened recently is more, you know, we may need to focus more on retention moving forward. So in the end, it's not going to break my heart if we don't continue it. It was something we tried. Um, there have been some people that have benefited from it. I think the officers that we've hired that are still there, the dispatcher we've hired that's still there. They are very appreciative of it. Um, and it did make a difference. Um, so it's not that I'm against it, but I'm also, I'm not going to lose any sleep if you, if, if it's not approved either way.
Chief King?
Yes, ma'am.
The, uh, current program for a CLEET certified officer is $10,000 paid out in four installments. The first being on the first paycheck that that employee receives.
Yes.
And then the second after they have successfully completed the field training program.
Yes, ma'am.
I knew that we recently had a case where someone got their first amount transmitted to the bank. And then we found out that they'd left and we pulled it back rather quickly.
Yes.
Would it make sense to postpone that first payment until maybe when both and pay both after the successful completion of the field training program?
I'm fine with that. I, you know, our field, our field training is anywhere from whole field training, minimum of 12 weeks, possibly 16 weeks. And then like the one in question, he, he waited 60 days to take his physical. And then we have a two-week period where they're not even in FTO. So, uh, depending on how things fall, they may get, they may get their second paycheck about the time they're starting FTO. But either, either whatever the council wants to do is fine with me. I'm not opposed to it.
And I would be fine with that. I think it's needed. I think that the communities around us, and it's going to be real easy to not build position. It's going to be really easy for people to start going to other communities. If this is not part of our incentive package right now. And unfortunately, that's just the way of the world at this point. Um, so, I mean, I think it's needed, but I would gladly, you know, modify or pass it with your modification. Um, if that makes it easier, it's fine by me.
I, I think we're a little less at risk for somebody who believes they want to be a police officer with us and then change their minds rather quickly.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, I just saw one Scribner's error when I kind of looked through this last night on page 60 of our packet under tax provisions. It says the city of Talalqua makes no representation of any king regarding the tax consequence.
Wow, okay.
Minor, minor change there.
Okay.
No king.
Yeah, somebody just typed in that name.
Types that a lot.
I would modify my motion to include the mayor's amendment, I guess we would say.
With your second?
And the Scribner's error.
I'll give that as my second, if that thing, yeah.
Okay. Further comments or questions? Do we have a roll call?
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff.
Yes.
Counselor Long.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Thank you. Item number eight is discussion of proposed move of the Cherokee County 911 Center to the Talalqua Police Station. Again, Chief King.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'll also call up my friend and fellow department head, Chief Casey Baker. Um, about two years ago, Chief Baker and I started, we have a monthly emergency services department head meeting. Um, EMS, Sheriff's Office, Marshal Service, everybody comes together about once a month. And we started about two years ago, working towards consolidating 911, getting everybody under the same roof. For over 20 years, we've had a 911 center. And city dispatch, city Talalqua dispatch has not been part of that facility, wherever it's at. Started out second floor in the sheriff's office, moved to South College, and we haven't been there under the same roof. We've had a city jail. We can't give up our dispatchers to go to 911. If we do, we just have to hire six more employees. Costs a current day salary, about $275,000 is what one seat in a dispatch, um, facility costs for 24-hour coverage. So for 20 years, we've been trying to figure out a way, 911's been trying to figure out a way to get us under the same roof with them to assist with carrying some of that water for the citizens of our county. Um, the talks, we had some momentum and they kind of fell apart. One of the biggest hindrances when we first started talking to everybody was how are we going to pay for the equipment and the move to move into someplace together? Cause it was about 1.2 million dollars to buy the equipment, the consoles, the radios and the equipment needed. So kind of lost traction. Well, about 90 days ago, Cherokee Nation announced at a 911 meeting that they're going to be pulling out of the 911 center in 2024. They're building their own call center. And so Cherokee Nation EMS dispatch will be leaving, which cuts our 911 center down to two call takers. Uh, NHS and fire dispatcher and Cherokee County Sheriff's Office, two dispatchers answering all the 911 calls for the county at one time. Plus answering all of the non-emergency sheriff's department numbers. County commissioners also, a little bit before that, spent a little over a million dollars and bought all new equipment for 911. So our biggest hurdle that we had in our original talks was junk. We cleared it. Equipment's bought. We didn't have to find $300,000 per entity to buy it. But 911's going down to two call takers. So I've met with sheriff's department, NHS, 911 board about moving 911 to the Talalqua Police Department. We have the square footage. We're already paying utilities on the space that they would move into. And it puts us in the same room to be the third or fourth call taker in a room to help carry the load of 911 or share that load of 911, which I think is a responsibility of the city. I really do. And honestly, when I talked to everyone about it, I told them, you know, this, this option benefits me the most because it doesn't cost any extra money for the Talalqua Police Department, for the city of Talalqua, for this solution, basically. I'm already paying the utilities on the square footage. I already have dispatchers that we pay and are housed there anyway. It just gets everybody under one roof. Um, 911 board voted last month, um, in principle anyway, to move to the Talalqua Police Department. I told them when I presented to them, still had to bring it to council, still had to, you know, it wasn't a done deal because there's going to be some cost. I'll get to that in a minute. Save the worst for last, right? Um, they've come and done an initial walkthrough to kind of gauge what we need at the police department for, to retrofit. Um, I'm estimating, haven't. I'm estimating, haven't really talked to any, anyone other than the radio people, Muskogee Communications. Estimating about $100,000 for the remodel costs is what it would take to remodel the police department to office the five administrative employees from 911. And get our dispatch area, get everything set up in dispatch area. And then we'd also have to relocate the driver's license examiner. Whether they move to another state building within the city or whether the county provides possibly a building, maybe where 911's moving from for the DL examiner to move into. And so just wanted to kind of put it on everybody's radar tonight. It's not an actionable item, but just kind of put it on everybody's radio radar, check the pulse of the council. To make sure Chief Baker and I aren't off in left field on something, but the way we see it. The way 911 sees it too, I, I think it's given the certain, the current circumstances, it's the best option for all. You know, what a lot of people don't know, even meetings I've had within city administration that they didn't know until we had the meeting is currently when you call 911 and the city limits Talalco, it's not a Talalco Police Dispatcher that initially answers the phone. It's a call taker at the 911 center who talks to you, gets your information. And then when they determine where you're at, what you need, then they transfer your call to the police department. You're talking about 45 seconds, maybe two minutes tops of a delay in response time. For that transfer to happen, because when they transfer you to us, then our dispatcher is gonna ask you all the same questions again, gather the information and then send an officer. And you think, oh, 45 seconds, that's not too bad. Unless you're trapped in a car that's on its top. And you can't get out. Or unless there's somebody breaking in your house and 45 seconds is an eternity. And so we just wanted to come tonight to kind of break the ice, start the ball rolling a little bit. And get a feel for what the council would like. And then come back hopefully later with some numbers if the council is not opposed to that as far as what renovation costs would be. And I'll turn it over to Chief Baker now to speak.
Always hate following Nate. He does such a great job. I just got a few things I'd like to address. Thank you, Mayor and Council for the time. Talalco should have been part of 911. They've always should have been part of 911. I, I know the importance of having 911 represent all the entities in this community from working in three different agencies. You know, working for the county, working for the city police department and working for the, the fire department. And, you know, seconds count. And having all the entities working together not only benefits the entities, but it benefits the community. One of the, one of the things also is the police department is a better elevation from where it is now. It's about 100 foot higher. So there's a clear line of sight to the, the city's tower, which is by the water tower or our communication is. It will eliminate the transfers, Nate said, for us to respond. And everyone in the same room and everyone's on the same page. And you know, with everything going on in today's society, you know, that's a must. Everybody needs to be on the same page. Especially when we're talking about lives. Thank you.
We'd be happy to take any questions from council, mayor, the public, whoever at any given time. Or comment.
Well, I mean, you know, this is, the conversation has been going on for two and a half, two years, two and a half years. And I think, you know, just some of what I've been hearing is. You know, the first issue, of course, was cost. You know, the second issue was that the, you know, the dispatch. Had to have female dispatchers so that they could, what a process, the female. Folks that are being arrested and they have to be able to do a search. And so I think that was an issue. And so I think that's, you know, so I think that's been addressed by this, you know, particular move. And then the other thing that I was, you know, just in conversation was, you know, that the. The dispatchers, the dispatchers were not necessarily in favor of this move. Is that what you're? I mean, the dispatchers that are part of, you know, they're part of the city now weren't in favor of this transition to 911.
Well, and under the current, what we're presenting right now is for each entity to keep their own dispatchers. You know, when we first started talking was to consolidate and to where, because really 911 is a coordinate, it's a 911 coordinator position. So basically they coordinate everybody else's dispatchers. And so at, at least right now, what we're looking at is Talalco, city Talalco keeping our dispatchers. Sheriff's Office keeping their own dispatchers, NHS, but we just house them in the same place. A lot of the big, one of the hurdles before was if we're switching entities for an employee, well, especially for the city, you're losing your longevity pay. And different things like that to move to another, another agency that's employing you. And so at least for right now, to get everybody on the same roof is initially to keep everyone, they will keep their own dispatchers. That's the way it's sitting right now.
So what's the, what's the downside? I mean, what are the, other than the cost, I mean, I assume there's gonna be some, like you said, remodel cost. I mean, what is the, I mean, because I feel like, and I think we all agree, it needs to be streamlined.
Right.
I mean, that 45 seconds or a minute and a half or two minutes.
It's a long time.
Especially if there's a drop call or it doesn't go through or, you know.
Yes.
So, I mean, what's the, what's the downside?
My own self, I don't really see a downside to it. Like I said, we're already paying the utilities for. The portion the driver's license, driver's license examiner's in now. We're already paying those utilities. We already pay the heat and cool and light, our current dispatch area. Because really the remodel is just gonna be for the admin staff itself. The, the furniture and everything for the dispatch consoles are already ordered. Most of it's come in and it's just a, it's a sit them in there and, and plug them in. So we'll have to have. Some substantial electrical work as far as adding some circuits.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask. Is it, it, do they, are they the hard line, like, or is it satellite or voice over IP? Or I mean, I assume.
It, it's hard line. They have, I think it's Call Works is what they run.
Yes, basically kind of dumb it down on our, on our. Terms is it's basically a hard line to Oklahoma City. So they have to move that hard line and that's, you know, about a 30, 35,000 or.
About a third of the remodel cost has just been moving the trunk lines to the police department.
And then I guess my other question is with, and, and maybe this is just on TV, but it seems like when. When you call into 911 that they somehow can place that dot on your, from the device that you're calling on. Does that go away currently if it's transferred to the police department for?
Yes, because it's just a phone call. We don't have a computer screen show.
There is no dot of where that.
If you call from your cell phone, 911 has your GPS, but we don't at the police department when we answer that call. This would fix that, because we would all have the same screen.
And the fire department, so we're dispatched through 911 currently, and we've used it several times to locate missing people. You know, we've had. For last instance, we had someone have a heart attack that was in a deer stand. It made the call to 911, but didn't, you know, we had his GPS locations and we was able to walk right to him. So a lot of that technology is going to be with this new equipment that was purchased.
Question about the dispatchers being paid from different entities. Is the pay rate for the dispatchers from the different entities approximately the same? So there's no conflict about I'm doing the same job and getting paid significantly different?
I think our dispatchers make about a dollar, start out at about a dollar more an hour than what the sheriff's department dispatchers do. I'm not sure. I know there's a pay difference between the Cherokee Nation EMS and NHS EMS dispatcher, but I'm not sure what that amount is. So. I, I mean, ultimately, Chief Baker and I are in agreement. Ultimately, we would both like to see all dispatchers under one entity, that 911 hires, manages dispatch for every. Emergency services within the county. I just, I don't know right now if everybody's ready to let go of their dispatchers.
Well, yes, but it seems to me that in the transition, you could build some parity.
You could.
That would get everybody on the same, same point.
Yes. It's still a possibility for sure. And it's not something, I am not opposed to it at all. But I'm not the only voice at the table.
How do other? Counties do it? I mean, do they have like a trust?
And we have a trust.
Yes. Comes together. I mean, because it seems. A little bit disconnected. I mean, if you're not in the center, so you call 911 and then I've got a dispatch over here, or you've got a dispatch over there. And you're not getting the same information that other people are. I mean, it seems a little disconnected there.
It is. And it's been something, like I said, our city jail has been the biggest hindrance in. In solidifying 911 for 25 years. But also the cost, if we shut down our jail and went and just housing the county jail. We'd spend about $125,000 a year just in housing prisoners at the county jail for city charges. Plus, we'd still have the $274,000 a year paying for dispatchers at 911 as well, if we moved them there. So our cost, like I said, this is the only way. To help consolidate 911 without our costs. We have a one-time hit of 100,000. I'm hoping 100,000. I haven't had any contractors look at it yet, but. So. Where otherwise it's that repetitive cost of whatever it is. I mean, I, I just ran numbers yesterday. We arrested 84 people last month. And 47 of them were municipal prisoners. We're gonna be paying $54 a day to house somewhere else if we shut down our jail.
And most of your cities, answer your question, most of your cities, they're all under one, you know, like, say, Misscogee probably the closest one.
That's what I was thinking about, Misscogee, but I don't know how it's, I know it's got a call center.
Both, I think Misscogee, the way they do it and what I'd like to see, and I think what Nate would like to see, is they basically, they got a formula of how many calls you get. And then there's a point of how much, this is how much you're gonna pay. For us to dispatch you, if the bulk of the calls is this, then you're gonna pay $100,000 to dispatch.
I think Misscogee's rate's like $9 a call. And so if they did, we had. You know, I don't know how many were radio dispatched, but we had 3,564 calls last month, you know? If all those are radio dispatched. Pretty good amount of money.
$9?
$9 a call is what they bill right now for, to those different entities, whether it's rural fire department, city fire department, police, sheriff's office, whatever it is, it's $9.
What about when they dispatch everybody? Because, you know, like the fire department's a first responder, so.
Right.
They're gonna get dispatched, you're gonna get dispatched.
With injuries, they're probably gonna bill both of us because they dispatched both of us to it.
Well, now, then the Cherokee Nation's gonna get dispatched, probably Cherokee Nation EMS. So now you're looking at 918.
A lot.
Gonna go in the 911 dispatching.
So just wanted to, like I said, break the ice a little bit. We've been talking about it a lot. In the two-on-two setting with the mayor and city administrator over the years and talked about it in department head meetings. And we've talked about it a bunch amongst ourselves. And finally have a unique circumstance in which kind of everything's aligning, other than the fact that we'll have to turn loose a little bit of money to remodel the police department that's not in the budget. It wasn't budgeted ahead of time. This kind of all happened quickly and after budget preparation had already taken place.
What's a foreseeable timeline?
January-ish, hopefully. That's when the last of the equipment will come in for the, for the console, for the dispatch.
Have to be all new equipment? Because you can't just unplug that stuff like you're moving from an apartment to a house, right?
Well, you can, but the stuff they're dispatching from right now is the same stuff they dispatched from when they started 911 in 92, 93, some.
Well, you got new stuff.
Yes, brand new stuff.
Bubble rat.
It's in our training center right now, both of them.
I have another question. So in the, I don't know, but we approved the AT&amp;T a tower. That was kind of right there next to the 911 center. And part of that was for the nine, I mean, they said that it would be helpful for the 911.
It was the first part of FirstNet when FirstNet first started. They never built that.
But I figure they're probably not playing.
Well, they, they had called recently and, you know, and I felt like probably want to bring it back for council again because. Modifications.
That was several years ago, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was approved, I think under the last, previous administration.
Previous 911 administration.
Yes, so.
All right. If there are no further questions, we will move on. Thank you so much.
For your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine is discussion only. Ordinance number 1343-2022. An ordinance changing the zoning from single-family residential district R1 to residential multifamily district R3. For a multifamily development on approximately five acres of land located on the southwest corner of East Downing and Nally Road. More particularly described as follows with a legal description. Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. I'll begin with the staff recommendation of this zoning change application and staff and planning commission recommend approval. Of the zoning change and the ordinance in establishing the property as RM1 due to recently adopted zoning ordinance. So this is five acres located on the southwest corner of Downing and Nally Road. It's on the far eastern edge of the city limits. It's actually kind of the last property there on the city limits. In the packet, you have a master plan of the subject property with a mix of two-story triplex and quadplex townhouse style structures. Total number of units would be 41. On that five acre tract. And again, in the, in the packet, you have reference letters from. The applicant in the form of an email that I believe the, all the counselors received at some point over the last two weeks and then a letter that was submitted. Additionally, you have some letters that were submitted at a planning commission meeting in opposition of the zoning change. I do want to make some comments on the staff report here as a part of the recommendation, recommendations largely based on the needed increased density. Near current and future hospital expansions located approximately one mile to the southwest of the subject property. An important note to make is sewer provisions are not currently available to serve the density of the proposed zoning change and the proposed development. The applicant has been working with TPWA and surrounding property owners to extend sanitary sewer to the subject property. And building permits will not be issued for any residential development that exceeds required sanitary sewer requirements. Planning commission did vote unanimously to approve. We did have some residents there in opposition. And the applicant and those residents kind of had a, an open discussion about the improvements. And generally speaking. They seemed acceptable to. The development after that discussion. I'll leave my comments here. The applicant is available for any questions that you may have for him. And there may be some individuals in the audience that would like to speak as well.
Hey, there's some of the major, I mean, some of the concerns that I'm, you know, that I'm seeing that I've read through is traffic, increased traffic flow, turning on to. Downing, adding 100 and, and what did you say? Not 100, I'm sorry, 41. Is that 41? But there's 13. Units or so, is that right? One, two, three, four. 12 units.
12, 12 structures, 41 units total.
Triplexes, give or take, there can be probably less than 50 people, say 50 autos, 50 vehicles, give or take. And so that, but that's the major concern that we're hearing is probably traffic.
I think it's that, increased traffic. You know, we, we did some improvements with the county on Nally Road there from, from Ross to Downing. And with those improvements, they've seen probably not, well, they've definitely seen some increased traffic, but higher speeds. With the asphalt being laid on that stretch of Nally Road. And so this is something regardless of this zoning change being approved and, and this type of development. That area, it's gonna see some increased traffic. And so we need to put, the city as a whole needs to put that area on the radar. To see what we can do to, to make it safer.
Yes, when, when they build the new hospital, that is the back road to that location, correct? So it will have quite a bit more traffic just because of the hospital that's going to be built out that way. So I think we're going to have to address traffic at that intersection. Probably sooner rather than later.
I agree.
Dr. Uzo, did you have a question?
There were a number of people, I'm Dr. John Uzo, and well, basically when I sent that plan, it was very interesting to me regarding the nature of the subject matter and how they did it. There were a number of people in objection to this, including the county treasurer. She did not attend because of basis of the discussion. My recollection was they, they really didn't want to do anything. They want to send it up to city council, make a decision. But if you look at that, it will not affect the other property, but there is single family dwellings. The ingress is off a interstate because you have to make a left-hand turn in to get into town. If you go down Nally Road, you hit, you hit the other major entrance to the hospital, okay? And then, then the trouble is, if you, if you actually go there and drive and attempt to make a right-hand turn on Nally, it's very difficult. And what they're gonna attempt to do is perpetuate high. And what they're going, attempting to do is perpetuate high density in a very restricted area. They have the hospital there with the ambulances. And it is designed for single-family dwelling. And what you're going to do is have a cluster of people trying to exit there in the morning. And, and leave and, you know, whatever it is, return at night. And there's only one lane in and one lane out off of Downing. Double, double yellow line. And I think the congestion would be unbelievable regarding that. Now, when you, when you get on, come down by bank first, you have three lanes, okay? So what they're trying to do is get the density, and once they get, purchase the property, they want to change the nature of the, of the particular property. And as the county treasurer, she's, she's lived there for over fifty years. It's always been a single-family dwelling. Okay? And that's what the people there indicated. And I did not hear an action whether they would actually approve it or not. Okay, Mr. Baker had a clarification in one of the items because what they did was indicate in something, a mailing address was incorrect. And what, what happened there was, he says, well, the people are going to expect, you know, the mailing address, people say, I know those people are not going to object. And they came up with the idea of shrivener's error. Well, people will, if you know who's going to live there, you're not going to object if you know the people. If you give them the wrong address, they have no idea who they are. So, in, in, in any event, I think when you finally look at the ingress, in the ingress of the people that live in the T He addition. And a hundred addition, attempting to leave and go to, go to work and return home, it's going to be a major congestion problem. Thank you.
Mister Penhill, would you like to respond to that at all or give you that opportunity if you would like so?
I, I, I don't know if I've got any direct responses to the concerns that Mr. Uzo presented.
Taylor, at one point, there was a question about the sewer. Did we get that? Has that been a game plan laid out for that?
I think that may be a good question for the applicant. I know he's had meetings with TPWA, you know, they, they maintain the sewer lines. And so I haven't been privy to those conversations. But I do know they've, they've had some discussion about getting that line to the property.
Is the applicant here or online?
Yes, applicant is here.
My name is Grant Cox. Thanks for having me, Mayor and councilors. I'm not, I was at the last meeting. I wasn't at the very first meeting. And so at the very first meeting, it was actually just tabled to have more discussion and there was no vote. So I don't know if that was. What he was referring to originally. When we had our meeting last Tuesday, we did talk through everything and. And we got to show them exactly what we're planning to build. And I felt like it was favorable. We didn't have anyone who was still in opposition at the very end. We do realize there's, you know, you're going to put a higher density of people in this place. We are planning to put a sidewalk and we do have a right-of-way so we can put a sidewalk down. Downing to try and motivate people to walk. And I live in a neighborhood in Tulsa right now. I did grow up here, but I live in a neighborhood in Tulsa where we do walk and it's, it's a reasonable thing for us. You know, as we all know, the new outpatient facility is four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand square feet. The new hospital is a hundred-and-twenty-seven bed. You know, you're going to have twelve-hundred people working in this really small little area, so. I'm, I'm not saying that there's not going to be any kind of a traffic issue, but I do think that that area, regardless of our zoning changes, okayed or not. I think you're going to have a traffic issue. That neighborhood is not going to look like it looks right now in ten years. You know, it's going to change. And then, you know, from the Cherokee County. We got the statistics on multifamily housing and like the vacancy rate right now is one-point-seven percent. So, you know. Granted, we are doing this as a business proposal, but we are invested in the community. My dad lives, my parents live about two miles from here. I mean, from there, I have twenty-five horses here. I come here every week. My wife and I are both physicians. We understand how medical communities work, how hospitals will work seven days on and be off for seven days. They really need a place to live. The chief medical officer at Hastings lives in Tulsa. She would love to be able to, you know, spend one or two nights here a week. But there's really just not adequate small housing there. You know, each of the units has its own driveway, does have a one-car garage. There's actually community parking. We're planning on putting a big privacy fence around it. You know, with these doctors being gone for up to a week at a time, security is a big deal for us. So we're going to make it where they feel comfortable. Coming in, you know, shutting their door and then leaving, you know? And like I said, traffic, traffic may be an issue, but I feel like traffic is going to become an issue in that neighborhood. Kind of regardless of what happens and hopefully we can be part of the solution for having people to be able to walk and live close. I'm happy to take any questions.
Yeah, my only question was about the sewer, they.
Yeah, so, yeah, back to the sewer. So we met with Mike Dolehead. You know, we have basically all utilities except for sewer. And so obviously we can't build this without the sewer. So if we had to do like a private sewer district and get paid. Back in the long run, then we're willing to do that. We're just working through, you know, getting it done.
Thank you very much. Doctor Uzo, quickly.
According to the density, the general rule is you could get four houses per acre. So we're talking about twenty homes, single-family dwelling. And what they're attempting to do is double the density at that particular area. Okay, because they want to have it in excess of forty. But if you look at the thing, if you have single-family dwellings, thinly as four per acre. That you could have with the driveways and all. So we're escalating from twenty thing for single-family resident dwelling. To over forty and materially increasing the density with the purpose of that particular area for development with single-family dwelling. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Anything online? No? Okay.
Oh, Jamie.
Jamie, behind that post.
Hi, I am Jamie Hale. I am one of the homeowners that live in Wolf Creek Edition. I can say that, you know, there really was no opposition at our last meeting. I think my main concern was the sewer. Portion of it. Being that if that isn't granted by TPWA and there is a larger cost and we have already rezoned it. Then that might even, you know, I, I can take his word for it. And I do, seems like a great gentleman. But if for some reason that property goes back up for sale and it is already rezoned, then where does that put us? So, that's just kind of my only thing. I don't know if those two can coincide kind of at the same time. But really, I think that's just my main concern is that then the property would go back up for sale, but then had already been rezoned.
But for the people who are online, they can't hear if you're speaking against the wall.
Sorry to make you off. The way I understand it from the sewer is even if the zoning is okayed, we still will go to the city, apply for a permit. Will have to have adequate sewer at that time or we'd be denied the building permit so we wouldn't be able to build. And then I would assume the same thing would happen to a future buyer, like. We're not planning to sell it or anything, but if we did sell the land, the same would apply to a future landlord.
Thank you.
So, Taylor, this is probably a question for you. So does everything have to be hooked up to sewer? I mean, do we not allow septic, we don't allow septic tanks in the city limits?
We do, we do allow septic tanks. If the rule is currently, if you're within two-hundred feet of sewer main. Then you're required to hook up to it. If you are beyond that footage, two-hundred feet. You are eligible for a septic tank or an aerobic system. But you do have to follow DEQ guidelines with a perk test and all that kind of thing. And the minimum acreage for that type of sewer system is a half acre. So you have to have at least a half acre to do an aerobic or septic tank.
So if they couldn't get this, you know, TPWA to bring sewer out, they probably couldn't. Do this proposal, but then going to what Jamie said, they still could put like multifamily housing just of a smaller level on a septic?
It depends on the size of the property they have. They got five acres and the number of units. And then they've got to do, you know, some flow rates and tests to identify, you know, how big is that septic system need to be? I think the, the residents' concern is if the zoning change is, is approved. And the current applicant ends up selling it and a new buyer decides, oh, we can do this, we can make this cash flow. Then rather than forty-one acres, the maximum number of units is actually sixty-one units. So that's, I think that's more her concern with the question that she had, or the concern that she had.
Thank you, Taylor.
Yes, and just so you know, the plants are beautiful. There is nothing wrong with that part of it. You know, those, that, that was absolutely wonderful. And they, like I said, you know, wonderful people. That, that's just my main concern is the reselling of the property and what that, what that might look like. Great, thank you.
Just a comment on the, the typical development process. So you're always, if you need a zoning change, you're always going to do that first. Because, you know, you're not going to spend a whole lot of money to get the infrastructure there, come to city council and ultimately get denied, and then you're totally out. So. You know, even subdivision process, those plats that are being proposed, there's no. They're, they're plating it because they need to get sewer or water utilities to the property. They go through that process prior to, you know, actually putting the money upfront for utilities and engineering and all that.
Thank you. Moving on to item ten, discussion, possible action to approve. Approve with modifications or deny the preliminary slash final plat of Collision Center Edition? Again, Mr. Tannehill.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll begin with a staff recommendation and planning commission's recommendation, which is to approve the preliminary and final plat. Of the Collision Center Edition with the following modification. Submit an administrative approval of a stormwater runoff table showing future construction will not exceed current conditions. And all that is, is taking into account runoff from existing sites compared to. The impervious surface that will be added due to construction. Another note is the applicant has submitted building plans and they're currently under review. Approval of the preliminary and final plat allows building permit to be released and construction to begin. This is located on Stick Ross Mountain, just north of the car wash that was constructed a few months ago.
And this does not require a zoning change?
It does not.
It is just approving the plat?
Correct.
I'm going to motion to approve second.
We have a motion second. Any further questions, discussion? Not till we have roll call, please.
Counselor Ratliff.
Yes.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Long.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item number eleven is discussion and possible action to approve or deny the purchase agreement for a two thousand twenty-three Freightliner. M-two-one-zero-six rear-load Packer truck. Body on this will be purchased using Sourcewell contract zero-nine-twelve-nineteen-dash-NWY. And the chassis will be purchased using Oklahoma State contract SW-zero-three-five-T. Mister Armstrong.
Yeah, sitting back there listening to Christmas coming early, there, I might ask for them. So, if you guys seen in the packet, the inventory of our vehicles, you can see that the VIN numbers are thirty-eight, eighteen, thirty-eight, seventeen, thirty-eight, nineteen. Means they're all strictly, they're all made at the same time. So, running a fleet of vehicles and having them all the same year, what happens is, change of VIN. One goes down, two, three months later, next thing, next thing, next thing. So, I believe separating these trucks, putting a gap between about two to three years between, gives us time for you. May, make ourselves more aware of preventive maintenance. And that's what I'm asking for, than the. Equipment reserve account to purchase vehicles that we need to keep our community clean and keep everything rolling. And the reason, and, and we're not adding to the department that is replacing a truck with a cracked. It's just trash trucks that are made for about six to seven years. And we've had these since two thousand fourteen, which actually makes them two thousand twelve because the years are two years ahead. So, the two thousand twelve realistically for a conversation, for a conversation that we've had this long already. So, and another thing with this is there are lease purchase agreements. I mean, not lease purchase agreement, but the buyback policies, which will, if we buy, if we buy a truck, we do not have to go into a signed contract. Saying, hey, in five years, we'll give you fifty-one percent of the total purchase back. You just have to pay the remaining balance. So we'll keep a fresh fleet rolling. So, that's a different conversation, but that's not a verbal commitment on.
Hey, lost me on that one.
The buyback plan? So, in my line of work, trash trucks have a better resale value at five years. So if you, if you get back on the buyback plan, you can. Pay, like pay the full price worth of it, which is two-hundred-and-three-thousand, something like the change on that. And then that vendor that you buy it from will give you fifty-one percent of what you paid for it to keep your rolling stock. Like, that's what a lot of cities are doing now to keep municipalities and city, like departments on fresh wheels. Because they can resell those better to private companies for a higher price than getting something that's been ran for fourteen years. Eight hours a day, hard on the hydraulic, hard on the pads and everything. So, it's easier for us to get a better. Price on bigger pieces of equipment that we have.
So this was going to replace one of the ones that was modified that had the, that you guys, that just tippers on the back. And so this is the full grapple.
No, this is not a full automated. This is just a rearload. This is what we use for commercial businesses. So with dumpsters that have three-yarders, six-yarders, eight-yarders like Del Rantos and stuff like that, that's the truck that it's going to be replacing. It's not a fully automated truck. That's why you can see the price difference.
Fifty years, so.
Yeah, yes, sir.
And this is budgeted, right?
Yes, sir. And the wait time on this, if you got to prove it today, would probably be about two to three weeks. Because they're going to put tippers on the back of this truck. If you know, i- if you kept up with the big truck like this. You're looking at two to three years before getting a truck, like getting a chassis. This, this truck came through as a fallout of a previous city not buying it. And it's on the ground and all we have to do is put tippers on it and it's ready for us. But it's not used. They backed out of it.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Can I ask a question to BJ? On the agenda item, it states. Hold on, sorry. Deny, approve or deny the purchase agreement for two thousand twenty-three Freightliner rear loader Packer body on the sweep purchase using Sourcewell contract, blah, blah, blah. The chassis will purchase using Oklahoma State contract, blah, blah, blah. The amounts aren't in there. Don't we need to include those amounts in the motion?
Well, the amount in the total.
Right.
Package, because like who we're buying it from? Like, we're buying it from New Way, which is.
Oh, and I totally get that. I'm just saying to cover us legally as far as Open Meeting Act and how we want to make the motion. Do we want to, do we have to use the amounts of those in, within that motion?
Yeah, if you've got them, if you've got them, put them in there. Two, two-hundred-and-three, two-hundred-and-three-thousand-nine-fifty-six.
Yeah, I'll, I'll modify mine to say two-hundred-and-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars.
Okay. We have a roll call, please.
Counselor Ratliff.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Counselor Long.
Yes. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Chris. Item number twelve is discussion, possible action to approve or deny the lease of a two thousand twenty-two Ram fifteen-hundred truck. For the amount of eleven-hundred-and-one-dollar-seventy-seven cents per month through the Enterprise Fleet Management program.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. You'll have to excuse my voice this evening. I apparently am starting to lose my voice. My wife will be excited about that. If you'll remember. A month or so back, I came to you and we did the same thing for a Chevy truck. Since that time, Enterprise, as I understand it, was, they couldn't fulfill. The Chevy or GM products. So they came back to, uh, City Administrator Chapman and myself and offered up to, uh, offer up the, the Ram fifteen hundred. So in essence, what we're doing is coming back to you and, uh, making sure that you understand what we're doing. We're not actually buying two trucks this budget year. We're just, or leasing, I should say. There, we're getting one truck. So that's what, that's what this is all about today.
But it's not Christmas in your department?
No, ma'am. I'd like to say yes, but no.
Wasn't the first one twenty-five hundred? Wouldn't it, I mean, wouldn't it a three-quarter ton truck?
No, it was a, it was a, it was an equivalence of this, the fifteen hundred truck. It was a half-ton truck, the one before.
The one you have now, half-ton?
It's three-quarter. But it does have the capability to pull the, uh, equipment that we do have on hand.
Down here.
Well.
I'm, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. And again, I'll ask about, I'll ask B J.
Price, it's on there.
Well, I know the price is on there, but it doesn't say the term and it's the sixty-term agreement. So do we also need to include the term of the one thousand one hundred one dollars and seventy-seven cents?
There again, just like the last one, I don't, I don't think it's required, but if you've got it, put it in there. That's going to be your safest practice, but, uh, yeah, so I mean, if you, yeah, if you've got it, put it in there, be, be more specific, but.
I'll try to remember that for next time Christmas rolls around. Right, alright.
Would you like to modify your?
I'll modify that. It is sixty months, right?
Yes.
And your second?
I'll modify my second.
Do we have roll call, please?
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number thirteen is discussion possible action to approve or deny a notice of intent with the state of Oklahoma Emergency Management for an E M P G Emergency Management Performance Grant.
Uh, again, this is a, uh, annual notice of intent for the thirty thousand dollars that the state pays the city for the program for emergency management. We just want to bring it before you and, and I hate to use the word transparent, but I'll use it. Uh, so you know what we're doing. But it's a, it's an annual grant.
We have a motion second. Do we have further discussion? No, we have roll call, please.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And item number fourteen is a proposed executive session. We have a motion to exit the regular session and enter executive.
So move.
Second, roll call, please.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
All right. We will adjourn and return at some point in the future. Hey, um, item number fifteen is reconvene into regular session. Do we have a motion? Sound moved?
Second.
We have a motion second.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number sixteen is discussion possible action of the purchase and utilization of real property located adjacent to Anthist Sports Complex as provided by twenty-five O S thirty oh seventy-three.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to allow the mayor and the city administrator to negotiate a contract to purchase the property up to four thousand dollars per acre, including any closing, associated closing costs, uh, up to a maximum of twenty acres. And utilizing either stormwater management funds for those that lie in the creek area or capital improvement fund for the remain.
Now, I will second that motion.
We have a motion second. Is there any discussion? If not, could we have roll call, please?
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
No.
Thank you. Item number seventeen is discussion possible action for the purchase and utilization of real property located at two hundred West Choctaw. Council, would anyone like to take action? Hearing nothing, we will move on to number eighteen, which is discussion possible action to approve or deny allowing the mayor and/or city administrator to negotiate a sales contract for the real property located at four hundred South Phoenix Park Avenue. Councilman Ratliff?
As many of you may know, Phoenix Park has been in a constant state of deterioration over the last forty-five years. Um, luckily, uh, the piece of property is of some value to those in the neighborhood. And so I would like to make a motion, um, that we do allow the city administrator and the mayor, uh, to negotiate a sales contract on the, the property at four hundred South Phoenix Park Avenue.
I have a question. Do we need to open up this to another bid?
I think there should be a second.
I think before we talk about that, I'll make a second so we can talk about it. Second?
The, uh, property was placed for open bidding, uh, some months back.
Uh-huh.
So it has been open for other bids for that period of time.
But doesn't need to be rebid out or free?
No, we, uh, we followed our current real estate property disposition policy and actually went beyond it. Taylor, if you'll explain exactly the process that we went through.
Yeah, so, um, it was actually in the middle of March when we went out to bid, uh, requesting bids for the property. Um, we have a thirty-day window, uh, to allow people to submit. On, on April thirteenth, we had an open, uh, an opening of those bids, didn't receive any. Uh, and so when that occurs, uh, we, we leave it out there and it's allowed for unsolicited offers to, to come in, um, in a sealed format. Uh, and we did receive one sealed, uh, offer. And so, and I believe that was, that was received back in Yep, June sixteenth. Um, in addition to that, we mailed, uh, notices to abutting property owners, uh, letting them know that the property was for sale, um, during that bid process and published in the newspaper.
The reason why I'm asking is if we change the price up or down, do we need to rebid it? That's what I'm, I'm kind of getting at. If, you know, that's just.
So when it was, when it was placed for bid, the minimum, uh, bid was one million dollars. Um, and that is, uh, of course, in the event that you receive multiple offers. Again, we didn't receive anything. So, uh, it, this one came in as an unsolicited offer, uh, which, which people can do for any property that even if it's not advertised.
So we didn't change our price or we did change our price?
We didn't set a price. The, this, the price was set on the bids that were received, which was zero.
Okay, so the. Listen, sir.
So we didn't get any bids and then we were taking unsolicited offers, but did, did people know that would, they were able to do that? Because I think one of the issues is we haven't unsealed anything yet. So nothing has gone, been made public. And I think that there, when we didn't get any bids, I think there was a thought process that, that was kind of done and we were moving on.
There remains, and I think even today still remains, a large for sale sign on the property, two large for sale signs on the property.
So if we're able, sorry.
With, with the phone number, contact information or city hall.
And we have had, and we have been contacted a handful of times, I believe.
So even if we were, say, we were to approve eighteen tonight, is there still an opportunity for people to turn in a, a sealed offer?
I think if a motion is to approve the mayor and city administrator to, to enter into a contract, it would be open until they enter into that contract, I suppose.
But we don't even know what the contract is, right?
Yeah, the contract's got to be negotiated.
Has to come back to.
Correct. Well, unless you authorize the mayor and the city administrator to.
To accept the contract.
Right.
And all we have to done is to negotiate.
And I think there's a lot of that that need, the part that I'm, you know, most interested in negotiating are things moving forward as far as, you know, who's going to maintain the fields? Are we still going to have access, you know? For what? The city, will the city, you know, to what, you know, to what extent and for how long will we have access? What future changes are expected of the fields? I mean, all those things are things that are just as important as the number. Uh, because as you know, you know, if, if our kids don't have a place to play because then, you know, then that doesn't benefit the city. And so I think we have to figure out and, and through a contractual obligation between the two parties, need to make sure that the kids are, are going to have a place to play.
Well, and if, so the price still hasn't changed, so I'm still trying to figure out if people can still make an offer or they cannot make an offer.
Uh, as of, you know, the end of the day, today, five o'clock, people could still submit an offer. I don't know how that functions after an action's taken by the council. If it's, if it's no action, they can certainly submit an offer tomorrow. Let me just be.
Both could happen. We could pass this and offer still could come in, correct?
Well, uh, what I'm just saying, I'm more worried about if we, at a certain price and that if we change it or we change our minds, we still need to make sure everybody else knows that is this as well. I mean, I just don't think it's public and that's, and that's what I have a question on.
So, um, I think maybe to, to, to help this situation is anybody can put in an unsolicited offer for any piece of the property that the city owns and the city council can act on it if it's in, if they see it as the best interest of the city. So it doesn't necessarily have to go through the bidding process if you feel that it is in the best interest of the city.
But at the time that we bring back a sales contract and the council approves that sales contract, at that point, we're locked into that contract.
Yes, correct.
That's what I was more worried, more worried about from a public. You know, that, you know, making sure everything we have stated as a, to the price and that everybody knew that, that no one had that extra opportunity. So, okay.
Well, and I don't even worry. I, my issue, my, in my issue, I guess, is that it went out for open bid. We said that we never got any bid, you know, we didn't get any bids. And then it hasn't ended up on an agenda and now it's on the agenda and it's like, well, I didn't know that it was open bidding season or it was bidding season or that I could even make that offer. And I guess, yes, somebody could have called the number and, but, you know, they're, they, they didn't. And so now should it go back out? Should we do another? So my first question was, should we do another bidding process? Maybe that doesn't necessarily sound like what we should do, but we can let it be known to everyone that the, it's still for sale. And there, if there's offers to be made, offers can be made. It's not done. Like tonight doesn't end offers and tomorrow we're not.
It says negotiate. I don't think that.
So if you were, had the owner of a retail property and you listed it for sale with Century Twenty-One and you didn't get any viable offers, matter of fact, nobody really wanted it at a price that you were offering it out there. So you took it off the market, but you left the Century Twenty-One sign up there. And someone called and said, I'd like to make an offer on this piece of property. At that particular point, you would, as that property owner, consider that offer. And you would consider that the general public had known that it was available because the sign was still up there. That it, you know, you would assume that they thought it was still available. And so I'm not seeing that the general public is not aware that this property has been available. What we have gotten is a offer that may be a viable offer. We have to flesh out those details as Trey said. But I don't know that we need to go back out and go through the bidding process again.
And I don't know, and I'm not saying.
Yeah, but, but, you know, re-offering it out there for the price that we were asking again. Or, you know, are you suggesting that we open up the bid that we have and then go back out and say, okay, we're considering this one now? Everybody who wants to come in a little over that.
Saying we haven't unsealed anything.
Right.
I don't even know, you know, I know that there's one offer, but I don't know what it is. I don't know any of that. I don't know any of that and I don't want to know any of that because, you know, but my, I think the bigger, the issue that I'm having is the, the issue that I want to make sure that it can be had, which I think I'm hearing saying is yes, is that voting tonight, we're not, we're not voting on selling the property tonight because there can be other offers that come in from this point forward. Cause I think there are some, there. I think there, there are.
We're going to change the price. I just want to make it sure it's public. That's.
I don't even know if we change the price.
Did we change the price?
It's an unsealed.
There wasn't a, there wasn't a listed price. There was a minimum bid price.
And which was?
Which was a million dollars.
Okay.
And so, and again, we didn't. Right. Right. And so when that thirty days window went away, there was no minimum bid price at that point.
Okay.
That thirty-day window lapsed and so now we're receiving unsolicited offers on a piece of property that was once advertised for bid.
And it was the, our minimum bid price of a million, right?
In that thirty-day window it was.
Thirty-day window.
Correct.
Okay.
And I don't care about minimum.
No.
Well, I mean, I care about. I just want to make sure that people, not everybody understand. I, I don't think that there's a complete understanding of once it closed, then we were down to unsolicited offer. And I know that there's a sign there.
Had we taken the sign down, I would agree with you, but those signs are out there and they're big. They're not, uh, you know, a piece of paper size. These are eight by, four by eight sheets plywood, aren't they?
Uh, they're banner signs.
Okay, banner sign.
Yeah. And, and the other thing, and the other point I'd like to make is, you know, I think it's only fair to this, you know, potential buyer, uh, to put, you know, essentially made the offer, you know, in the middle of June. You know, so I think we at least owe them a courtesy who's been a, you know, a great community partner with us to say that, you know, we are either going to accept it or we're not going to accept it or we're going to negotiate the terms of that contract and bring it back to the council. Uh, I don't think, you know, I don't think any of that's closing today. I mean, this isn't a done deal as of today. We really have to work out the details. I say we.
Well, as long as it's not earmarked as a specific project, I'm okay that.
So, does anyone want to take action on the item?
Give a motion.
Okay, then, could we have roll call, please?
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
No.
Thank you very much. Item nineteen is discussion of a mid-month special meeting. I was looking at Monday, the nineteenth. Item nineteen is discussion of a mid-month special meeting. I was looking at Monday, the nineteenth. Be two weeks down the road, five thirty. Anyone have a issue or concern? Yes, sir.
Not allowed discussion on this?
I'm, we had discussion, I'm sorry.
But you had discussion. You didn't say anybody got into comment?
We have taken a vote. I apologize. Mid-month special meeting.
I don't think so.
Thank you for your comments. Mid-month meeting on the nineteenth, is that okay?
Mr. Carroll, I don't, I don't, yes, I'm okay with that. Man, I'll, I'll address his question. Now, this isn't a done deal. Okay? So this isn't like we've, we've made, we haven't made, we haven't made the decision to, you know, to sign anything on any dotted lines. It's just been given to the mayor and city administrator.
At the next time this comes up on the agenda.
Thought I could do that today while I'm here.
Or you got three minutes, two weeks on the nineteenth to come up and give your spiel, especially if it's not on the agenda in two weeks.
All right. So at this particular point, mid-month, the nineteenth, five thirty, next item is adjournment.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Long.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.